Call the planning commission meeting to order at
Seven thirty PM for May third.
All rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who called? Delkey here. Heather Seehere here. Grant?
Here.
Rumble?
Here.
Patterson?
Here.
We're on the approval of the agenda. Do we got anything for that? Otherwise we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agendas presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the meeting minutes for April fourteenth. Anybody got a chance to go over those? We're looking for approval on those unless there's anything that needs to be brought up.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have before it site plan, two-two-nine-one-nine West Main, Hall Dorro. This is going into the same deal we were dealing with on the last one. Officer Dorro, would you like to go over a little bit what it is you're doing in this space?
Yeah, I've submitted a written.
Very good.
Well, thank you. Yes, a written plan for the use of the space in conformity with the application provided to me by the village. There is included in that package the actual schematic of the layout of the building in relationship to its surroundings and the interior of the building. My proposed space is unit five, which is highlighted on your map there or your schematic, and it would be intended to be used as office space. If there are questions regarding my submission, I'm happy to answer them or supplement them as the commission would prefer.
The only thing I didn't notice in here, you were informed that garbage has to be taken out by the tenants personally.
Correct, that is correct.
I said, "With an office, I don't think you're going to have that much to have to worry about." But so that we know.
I do believe I addressed that in there, but you are correct.
And it's quite possible. Okay, anybody got any questions?
Yeah, that was number four.
So how long do you practice?
Mostly eight, twenty-three, or eight. Actually, it's only in land use planning.
Just curious. Anybody else? As this is well within acceptable for this space, we're looking for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the site plan for two-two-nine-one-nine West Main, Hall Dorro, as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
You guys are side group's side.
I'm sorry?
What is number eight referring to? Ordinance amendment discussion.
We are planning, if you wanted to hang out for it, you could. There's going to be an amendment to a couple of the verages from a change of shall to may because it's just a matter of how things are operating now.
Okay.
Oh, this one's true.
No, 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 it has to do with like the process of our meeting and what things that we actually need to do versus what we're, you know, the bylaws say.
Thank you.
Very, very small change. It doesn't really affect, I don't believe it would, but all you could ask.
No, that's okay. I have a quick question. The other tenant that is renting didn't get her paperwork in on time, so she will be attending the next meeting. Do you see any reason for me to have to be here for that, or do you think that will be kind of smoothly as well?
No, I mean, as long as everything goes the same way as, you know, there's no changes with workability, then yeah, there's never, you don't have to be at the meetings.
Okay, so future reference for this stuff, I mean, like, we have to do this every time with my people. There's not a process where they can do this over email and like just submit their stuff and then you guys approve it? They always have to come to the meeting?
They have to be in front of the meetings.
Okay, I just was checking. I feel like it's a waste of lots of people's time, including your own. So I was just seeing if there was a way to streamline that a little easier.
No, right now they do. They have to come before the board and get their approval to be in that space.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for answering my questions.
No problem.
Excuse myself, thank you.
Good night.
Have a good evening.
Okay, we are now moving forward to the bylaws. First and foremost item is F, the agenda, on page three, where it says, "The order of business for meetings shall be as follows." It needs to say, "May be as follows." And these examples were set up for communities much larger than ours, and a lot of this stuff is unnecessary. We have checked with the attorneys to find out that this is something that we are allowed to do. There are certain items like double public comments. We rarely have public in the office, and we have always given them an opportunity to speak when they need to. So we do not have to have it on the agenda twice. We don't need to actually divide it up into new business, old business. The, what did we say about the liaison? There was, there's a spot for the liaison, but Dave really just communicates with the village council for what we've said. He doesn't have to come here and tell us what council has said unless there's something pressing our agenda. Also, the ZBA meeting, we don't have to have that listed in the, in each agenda because we only need when it is necessary. So it would be put into the agenda when we would have something to actually discuss during that time.
I have a question.
Yep.
Like, I would suggest also, if we always are going to approve the agenda before we approve the meeting minutes, then let's change these, let's switch four and five. I would rather keep the shall in there and then just consolidate as we need to, right? If it says, if we want to do public hearings, if there isn't one, we don't, you know, you put it in there, but then there's, all you say is no public hearing or new business, that's fine, drop old business. You could do liaison reports instead of two separate recordings, and if there isn't anything, enter it into your agenda, but then if there isn't anything, you just say nothing there, right? I just would like to see the agenda match the bylaws because it doesn't currently, it should go in this order. Should, this is the stated order of business, so bylaws should match that. So if you prefer doing agenda first, then change the bylaws. I mean, now's the time to do that.
Except there's so much on here we don't even use, that isn't even necessary to put on there. So if you, if that's what your preference would be, then change that whole wording to match our agenda.
Well, except then if you have, if you do have reports or anything, where would that be?
On your new business.
New business is usually items that the, that people, that you need a motion that you vote on. It's not likely that if someone brings a report to us that we're going to, that we're going to vote on it. New business is the business of the committee, right? Things that we're making decisions on. If you just had a line for report and then if there wasn't one, there wasn't one, or like other correspondence, I don't know that we, reports and correspondence.
Historically, that's been done under the chair report. Historically, that's all I'm saying.
I don't even see a chair report on here.
It's not. That's the whole purpose of, you pointed out, we don't follow that, so we're going to make it to match. It's their choice how they make them match.
Okay, great. This is my suggestion.
Anybody else?
I see your point about wanting to be, if you're going to make changes, you might as well be very specific, but I also see the purpose of just making the simplest change possible in effort to make it. Because there's, then I feel like it's a lot of changes to make. I do get what you're saying. I mean, I.
Well, the purpose of the bylaws is the rules that you function by. So if your rule says you can do this, but you don't have to do this, then I don't, then let's not even have that rule. I mean, the rules, this is the roadmap for how the planning commission runs its business. And if we, if we change everything to may, what was the point of having the rules then?
This is a roadmap for communities that are bigger than ours, is all we're saying. So what we're saying is by putting in may be as follows, we can have these should it be necessary, but should it not be necessary, our agenda actually works for our small community, is all we're saying.
Well, I understand that. I understand, I get all that. It should absolutely be adjusted to our community, but I don't, I don't want us to shoot ourselves in the foot by picking out stuff that we can't add in later than if we have an opportunity that we need to add it in later.
Can we hand pluck it and decide which shall should become may to suit our needs? Since the signature is no big deal here nor there? I don't mind, I don't have strong feelings one way or the other, but you know, it's important to come to an agreement.
Right.
Well, what I'm confused at from your point, how is this actually blocking the items?
What's that mean?
Well, you're saying if we have it where this is the template we must use, if we have it where, okay, we have it to have one, two, three, four, five, all the way to fourteen in this particular order, if it's may, there's nothing that precludes that from being included on the agenda for that particular meeting.
That's correct.
So I'm understanding your.
But you also don't have to. It doesn't make it, there's no, there's no, there's no accountability then, I guess, if you can, if you have any of these options we want, except if we don't want to.
It's not what we want, we don't want to do. It's what's necessary at the meeting, is all we're saying, is that, you know, if we have to have something put in for zoning board, it can be put in on the meeting that it's necessary. But we wouldn't have to have that on the agenda every single month when we're meeting if there is no ZBA appeals or representative to be heard at our meeting, is all we're saying by putting may. We're not saying leave it out completely.
I understand.
It's just, just item F that we're, is a sweeping change of may.
That's the one.
Yeah, that's the only one I don't, it makes the most sense.
Sam's got to address a different one, but that's the one.
Good, yeah. I totally understand and support the idea of making it general and broad. I do see your concern about how then it's nothing is absolute, absolutely required, but.
Except.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think that's the intention of it, and we've gotten this advice from an attorney who says that we're still covered in that sense.
You also are covered by Robert's rules of order as to what your agendas have to do and not do and include and not include. We can't take out public comment, for example. We have to allow the public a chance to say.
Even if it says may, we can't omit that.
Even if it says may, we can't, we can't take that out.
Right.
So there are other things to guide us that it's not just a free-for-all. I understand Sam's point, if it says may and not shall, then make it say shall and include the things the way our agenda is.
It gets very specific, it gets cumbersomely specific then, I feel like, somehow to map out each part.
I don't disagree with that because we are not, as Christie said, it's designed for a larger community that anybody would have to know that smaller communities follow the same general rules as larger communities, but they're not the same. They're just not the same.
Right.
So Sam's point for the shall and the may makes sense.
Right.
But it also, as Kevin said, just because we say may doesn't mean we can't put it in there.
Right, I don't, I don't disagree.
Any other comments on this particular part of the bylaws? Now, do we have to go through, vote on this one and then go to the next one? Or go to the next one and vote on any time?
I would say that you would vote on all of the amendments to the bylaws at one time.
Okay. All right, so Sam has also brought up in, let's see, oh, see, my pages were flipped, so I jumped to the other one before we did. The one that actually came first, on page one, in section D, the secretary, where it says, "The secretary shall sign the minutes by the planning commission." Becky does our minutes online, which means her name goes onto the bottom of them as stating that she is the one that has presented our minutes. Doing it online, that constitutes a signature because she cannot physically sign it at the computer, is how I have always looked at it. Sam sees it differently, so we should go through this discussion as well if we're actually going to make a move on changing some of these, so.
I think it's important that minutes are signed by the person that did it. I think that, I mean, clerks all over, all over, print them out, sign them, scan them, and then send them, then post them, or send them to whoever so that you have a signature. I think it's important that it be changed at the top of the minutes, well, you know, as approved at this meeting, and then sign, maybe, maybe we want to set up a process where recording secretary signs the draft and the secretary signs the approved ones or, or something like that so that it's, so there's a level of officialness to it.
Is that how the township would do it, for instance, or larger? You know, I would just wonder, is that something that only we're not doing?
As a clerk, I worked for, as a clerk for almost ten years, minutes are always signed, period. They're always signed, always.
And I will tell you that there is a copy of a minute in here that's been since the digital age that's somewhere.
Right.
All signed, I'm not disagreeing with Sam, I'm saying in the village, there aren't any. They're all done, submitted by whoever submitted, whoever did the minutes. They are not, they have not been.
At the risk of asking an obvious question, if this appears to be a legal question, can we just ask for a legal opinion?
Yep.
And then bring it back in the next meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, there's no objection?
That's great, so we can postpone the whole bylaws.
Yeah, that we will not hold on any of them until we have everything all at one time. So.
Great idea. Okay, so can we also, can we keep going?
Sure.
Because it says that we should get the, agendas should go out seven days prior to the regularly scheduled meetings, and I'm just wondering if we could, is there a way that we could make that happen?
We can absolutely make that happen because a former chairperson would take site plans up to two days before the meeting, so it was impossible to do an agenda ahead of time.
Which is not the case with me, so.
Just set up a schedule and do it and, because I, I mean, this was not enough, this is not enough time for me. I'm new with this, and I feel like I need to have more than two days.
Oh, that's fine.
Another thing I would like to see, if it's possible, to have a little more context around some of the stuff on the agenda because ordinance amendment, some of the stuff, there's just, there's not enough information for me to go on. I know a lot of places have agenda statements that go with agenda items so that it sort of gives you a brief synopsis of what the topic is. Everybody sort of starts off in the same place. I know you indicated that that's not what we do here, but I'm just suggesting that if we had a little more context, that would help everybody.
Most things, I will, I will give you the ordinance amendment was pretty vague on this one, but most things are pretty self-explanatory.
I still would like a little more context, a little more information when I, when I get my packet to look at stuff and to understand, like, there's just not very much to go on. Payment, bill, all of this stuff is like, these are the things I wanted to say. So I would like to see agenda statements on the whole packets.
No.
Because.
They're too varied. There's too many options for things that happen at that meeting. So I would have to have, you'd have to have, let's say, an approved as, as presented, not approved, or approved with conditions, and then you're still going up the top. Historically, we have never done the agenda statements ahead of time.
I'm not talking motion, I'm just, I'm talking an agenda statement that sets up what the thing is and what, what's the discussion that you intended to have, or what was, why is this on the agenda and what are we going to talk about? Sort of directs the group to why it was put there and what's, and you know, what they're asking of us. Helps us to understand so we can do our job.
Well, the discussion is what we do when we're here. I guess I'm not really seeing what it is that you're looking for to be added to.
A little more detail around like ordinance amendment discussion or bylaw.
I agree on that one. The bylaw discussion, all right, you guys can finish this one without me.
I've always found that the agenda works, like, if I need more information, I'm able to get it. I've always found that to be the case, even when I was newer at this and just, you know, it feels very.
We just call up and.
I can call or email, anything I wasn't sure about, I was always able to get clarification. And also though, that I think part of the reason it happens that way is so that we can allow the flexibility to our community of, hey, you can get this at the last minute and we'll still meet with you, like, in the name of Dr. Julie's time, you know? So I don't think that the lack of information always boils down to anything except that it's as quick as we can get it to us even sometimes.
But, well, yeah, that's true.
So when we get it, and the meeting is running that same, most of us show up asking all the questions we need to ask tonight of, and that's how, and I feel like we give each other that freedom and leeway, and the meetings are always real open to comment and question. Yeah, that's how, if there's already anything I've ever been unclear on, I usually just call and ask, or I send an email. It's, but, you know, it's only been, this is only like, you know, the second one.
This is my third meeting and, and I've never had the agenda seven days ahead of time. This happened on Friday mid-morning, and the office is closed for two days, so there's nobody to ask any questions to, which leaves me for, for all my questions have to be answered on the, on the meeting day.
I've stated to you ever since I've taken over the chair spot that you can email me, you can text me, you can call me at any time. If I'm busy at that moment, I will get back with you with any questions that you have. We understand that that was not an adequate amount of time. We've already agreed that we need to bring this back to the seven days prior, so that is something that we're, we're working on getting going.
I just wonder why having more information is such a, is such an, a struggle, you know?
I understand, I understand why.
What's the reason for not having clear and complete.
I understand the intention of your question. I also, it's just like with anything else right now, like, everyone's doing the best they can, and I think, considering the circumstances, I feel honored to be meeting in person with my commission, planning commission right now instead of everything digital all the time, and there's, yeah, it's, it's hard to get, you know, any, I'm open to changes too. I don't disagree with any of your points, Sam.
Okay, the only other thing that I noticed about the bylaws is that since the DDA and the planning commission are combined now, should there be something in these bylaws that includes DDA as due date or something, because there isn't? Should there be a spot on the agenda for DDA? Should there, I mean.
There is a spot on the agenda for DDA.
On what?
We've always done it after we have done the planning commission meeting.
On, on this one, on F, there's no reference to.
Oh, you're talking about on the, on.
Yeah, in the bylaws, there's no reference.
Because again, it's nothing that, well.
Bylaws came before this change.
Right, this came before we were connected. That's what we're telling you is that this particular thing doesn't set up for what our community does.
Now there's hints to, do we need to add it? That's all I'm asking.
And we'll look into that when we talk to Jeff about the other changes that we're looking into as well, so.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's opposed to changes, just as with anything else, if it's not just right, it's certainly not. I don't think anybody's fault. I think it's, I think everything that we, I think everybody's doing a really good, I joined the planning commission and I felt like for the first couple of meetings I wasn't, you know, sure, but now as I've been in it, I realize it's really easier to get informa, I've never felt like I wasn't able to get the information I needed. Everyone's an open door, and we're all very open to conversation, so I'm open to conversation. If you get this on a Monday morning and you don't feel prepared, I'm an open door. Always talk to me, and Christie's an open door, and Becky is a great person to call and say, hey, you know, what's coming at me with this? I'm not quite sure what the details are, and she, she provides us this, and so that's who I always go to, is like, hey, I need a little bit more. But yeah, I don't think anyone's opposed to, you know, any, you know, broad changes that help make planning better long-term. I totally feel you on that, that's the intent.
In a DDA, in the first meeting for your DDA, they set an ordinance of business for the DDA, which is one thing only, to pay the bond. So to kind of redundantly have the DDA ongoing, having both here, as Christie was saying, things that just aren't pertinent to that meeting.
Right, I understand that, but if you, but if it's not on agenda F, we just put on our new, DDA under new business?
Which is what we're saying with may. We don't have to use every single one of these every single month, but each month that we do need to have them, they would be added in as their own line member. Again, as we have DDA down here under nine, possibly it would hit nine according to how F goes.
I understand that. So then does, so then does it make sense to put it on this list here on agenda F?
This list is what we're talking about changing, so, no, it wouldn't make any sense to put it on this list. Once we get everything down pat, how we want to see the agenda set up, may and shall, what we're using, we'll have, I have notes for Jeff that will decide what to do with the DDA portion of it as well.
Okay.
So going back to the bylaws, are there any other points or concerns that anyone else has other than what was already brought up?
I just, when I was reading it, I was noticing that some of the activities aren't happening by the person that, like, the secretary, I don't know that you're doing the things. Not that it, not that it matters, I'm just noticing, and if we're going to do business the way we're doing business, then shouldn't our bylaws reflect that? Is my question. If the recording secretary is doing some of these things that's currently under some of the other things, then let's just put them there. If that's the comfortable place for us, then let's just have our bylaws reflect our reality. It's ours to do. That's all I'm saying. It doesn't agree, doesn't, you know, conform to each other.
I don't see what it is that Becky's doing that you're disagreeing with.
It's not that I'm disagreeing, I'm just making a point. I don't want anybody to get upset, right?
Well, I'm not understanding what, what point are you coming to the.
Act is set, an application, meeting, preparing, I don't know, who does that? Receive the correspondence, I don't.
Okay, so you're talking more the secretary than the recording secretary.
I'm just saying if, now would be the chance for us to go through and look at the items under each of the roles to see that they're in the right place, because it seems to me like Becky is the person, the recording secretary is the person who's doing some of these things, and then let's just go ahead and have it reflected in the bylaws if that's what's comfortable for us. That's all I'm saying. Because the bylaws say that the recording secretary takes, produces, and files the minutes and agendas and public notices, but she does a lot more than that.
Because she's the one in the office and not.
Right, so let's have it reflect that, that's all. The bylaws are supposed to be.
Well, it's what works for us right now.
But if we were to lose Becky, then there's still to change again.
I, I, I understand the point. You're saying changing the definition within the bylaws to reflect the current status quo.
Yeah.
Is what Sam seems to be looking at. However, if we were to lose Becky, planning commission or office, either, either place, we now have to change the bylaws again because we may not have.
That was my point, is that you don't want to make it proprietary to that position. You want to allow yourself to when it suits your needs.
Then you should do what's on there. Then if we're going to leave it like this, then we should do this.
Well, the usage of the word may allows you to kind of hand-pluck the things that work for you.
Maybe that was one, that was F.
Right, you're right, but.
I'm talking about all of these officers and their roles, if they just doesn't.
So we weren't talking about make it may sign, we were, I thought we were making shall may as well, since it was not F, this one was not turning the secretary may sign.
I was not, mine was. I was not, mine was Daniel's, not that all of the shaws were going to May.
No, I may have misunderstood. Just in those two instances, I thought that's what we were doing in both places. That was my misunderstanding.
That's what, if that's what the intention was, I missed that.
That was where we began with, but yes, it appears that there are many places where the word shall sits in place and it's causing quite a bit of contradiction. So I do believe, as Kevin suggested, we need to go back over all of this with the attorney and see.
Just have it reflect what we do. And I think it's perfectly fine to have it reflect our current situation.
Is it costly to have the attorney go through and do this?
Yeah.
Right. And is it how necess, how much attorney, you know, when, when changing shells to May gives us, with attorney's advice, the most sweeping, broad way to apply this to what works for us, it is, I wouldn't want to spend correctment from our taxpayer money on an attorney to do, to make it very, very specific, just in the name of spending, to make it very, very specific. We don't need to. That's my only idea. Only time to have an opinion is when we can say funny.
Just my thoughts.
We will have to bring that up to him as well and see what exactly we can do and what can't be done. We will discuss this again at the next meeting.
Well, that's kind of a precarious thing because you're fortunate to have Becky who is actually in the office. So when your applications come in, she handles it from that point to giving the deposit for it. To me, you know, we're right, we're right here. The next recording secretary may not be. So at that point, you know, who you've designated to may not be the most convenient person to be doing that.
So, so then, so then it shouldn't, those things shouldn't go under a different, shouldn't go under officers' tasks then? Because the officers aren't doing it. Can go under staff.
You may want to just broaden it.
Just have it reflect.
Maybe like rough draft an idea. If, you know, if, it's, what do you think it should say? Could it be, there's got to be a way to make it a, you know, a compromise. There has to be a way. And, you know, that doesn't have to be like, let the attorney write, draft something new or.
Right. I just think if you're going to have them, you ought to follow them.
You're about to suggest.
Well, the duties may need to be just broadened to be general. And let it play out as it is now, because like I said, if it changes and it's somebody that's not available during the day when the office is open and they're coming in to do their application, or they want to get some more information, or they need to bring something in and drop it off. You could have a hundred scenarios in there, Sam, of what, what to do. You may need to just broaden it and make it a general, you know, from application to presentation to the board members.
Well, then it doesn't, I mean, I'm not, I just would like it to be a little closer to what we actually do so that the bylaws have some truth to them.
So expanding on your point, would it be a good idea to include some redundancy in the various offices?
We can look at, we'll have to go over every single, every single officer and see where the discrepancies are and what we can do.
So if there's a situation where one person's not able to fill the duties, another person can step up? That was a question about redundancy issue.
Which is basically what Becky does to this point.
And I wasn't knocking her by, on the slightest.
But you know, this is a knock on Becky.
No, no, I, I, I don't think you mean, I, I understand the sentiment of what you're saying. But yeah, I, I feel like we should give ourselves the broadest application of how we can apply it to what works for such a small community where sometimes you have a hard time gathering people to cover every spot. So we kind of all have to have the most broadly applicable duties, which Becky is a very consistent help in that respect because she's here.
Because she works here.
Yeah. I couldn't say that I'm, yeah, I couldn't say that I would be able to do it without that hub of information available to me. And no one person is going to pump it out in a document like you can get, if you have a specific question, you can get an answer right up, right away.
Well, John, any of these topics, I, I don't think you guys can read, reach a conclusion tonight.
Uh, yeah, I'd be okay to table this until next time, because I could think, yeah.
Thinking it over and coming up with scenarios in your head. Oh yeah, what if we did this? What happens when?
Sure.
You know, think it, think it through before, like you said, we start contacting the attorney and, you know, start spending money. And then find out, oh wait, we didn't ask this. Or, oh, well, that's not going to work.
I'm all for making things right, but let's not do any, like, oh no, it's not an emergency, you know, but we should do it.
Right. There's no, there's no rush.
If we want to make changes, let's make them in the very best broad way possible.
Well, I also have a question about J, K and L under duties. Is that, are we doing those things? Is that part of our charge? Are we currently doing those things?
Duties of planning commission, DLA, a list of recommended projects, plans, studies, ordinances, et cetera, which should be completed by the village and transit, transmit such list to village council. So we have an obligation to provide something to the village council in respect to projects, plans, studies and ordinances. Is there a.
Is that an annual thing? Do we?
That's what I was wondering. Is there a, is it monthly, annually, or?
Isn't that something that the year that they comes up?
Whenever something comes up?
Certainly. Is that something that they, and I.
That's Dave's responsibility.
I would, yeah, okay.
He's going to report at every meeting regardless of what you.
So that would be the ex officio members responsibilities.
I was under the impression Dave Cohen was.
No, this is a helpful list of recommended projects, plan studies, which should, and transmit to the, he would be the one who would transmit it. But it's not, he's got to come up with items. That's the planning.
And to be fair, since I've joined the planning commission, the pandemic kind of put a screeching halt, all types of those things. So I never even thought twice about them, not being as part of our duties that end up.
Well, I'm just wondering if these are, I mean, if it's still pertinent, then that we do this, then we, if not, we should take them off.
Well, this kind of goes back to that whole May shall argument again.
Develop a proposed annual budget. Did we do that?
We did budget. Definitely did. Definitely.
Whether it was a budget that was.
The planning commission itself doesn't have a budget. It has a budget line in the general funds budget. But itself, it doesn't have an operational budget. The DDA does. And I am the treasurer of the DDA.
Okay.
So I prepared that, that budget and presented to them in early March and February, March.
So that's a, that's a separate, that's not something that the, since the planning commission and the DDA are combined, that's not something that the planning commission would strictly treasure? Okay. And then prepare a capital improvement plan? Do we do that? Or should we take it off? I mean, is council to.
That I don't see why you would have it on them, because you have no money. How can you do a capital improvement project?
Program on an annual basis.
Other than, you know, your master plan.
Because the village council can tell us not to, in which case we could take it off. I mean, we were reviewing the bylaws, so that's what I did.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you that there could be improvements. Was this mirrored from a much larger city that had needs for stuff?
Yeah. So if it doesn't fit us, let's change it.
And very long ago.
Very long, yeah. And it's the type of thing you can find in every government drawer or somewhere that, you know.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Going back to L, it even says it right here, unless exempted from this duty by the village council. So was that something that the village council had done in the past? Read on that particular item?
Well, it says on an annual basis unless exempted. So I would think they'd have to exempt us every year.
And they've never done that.
Okay.
Well, and I would need Dave here to ask him, like, hey, would you go to the planning commission and ask how important are these line items to you? Or go to the village council from planning commission and say, how important are these line items to you? Because if they're important to them, I'd certainly be more inclined to say, let's keep them and let's do them.
I can always meet with Dave later and talk about everything that we've gone over this meeting with him and see what his feelings are on it. Anymore?
So do we want to table this, go over the bylaws and then?
As long as we have no further discussion, I'm not going to table it until we've decided that we've discussed everything that we need to talk about.
I've discussed it to my satisfaction. We'd be happy to table it until our liaison to the village board is here too. That way, because I feel like we're going to have to just catch him up. Everything we talked about, we're going to have to catch him up. He really should be here because he's going to be instrumental in making a lot of these decisions, I would say.
Right.
I have nothing further. No, I was just curious what we're going to proceed on here, because obviously there's a little bit of back and forth on this. And I fully wanted to do the back and forth before we kick it over to Mr. Bahorsky.
Correct.
Right. So what's the plan?
So are we, we're done discussing for tonight?
Those are, yeah, those are what I.
So my suggestion is that we table this until we have a chance to go over things with Dave, talk with the attorney and the village council, see what, what things we can actually change, what things are a necessity to change. And go over everything I've made notes on that we've talked about tonight and move forward with this on our next meeting.
Agreed. And I'd be happy to devote time to anything outside of, I understand it's not necessarily time. It, we don't need to sit here and hash out every change. We might just suggest during the meeting, with everyone's time. I'm about to be off of work for the summer. So I'd be happy to devote time to anybody.
Okay. So then we will need a motion to table this as we gather more information and get ideas from other parties involved.
Motion to table the ordinance, ordinance amendment discussion until.
This is the bylaws?
Yeah, this is the bylaws.
I'm so sorry. Ordinance, table the bylaws. We can motion to table the bylaws discussion until next meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I.
Okay. We are now on the ordinance amendment discussion, which is everything that.
So sorry, I got ahead of myself there.
Which is what was given to us at the last meeting.
Yes.
Regarding our public hearing at our next meeting. Any further discussion on these items?
Just a moment here. Okay. So we're talking about the one that was from Ms. Baum, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm just trying to, I'm trying to get my understanding exactly. Trying to think of the best way I can word this. Because I read the background, I, I read the whole thing. I'm trying to understand how this is a better situation than what we currently have. That's the best way I can put this.
I'm kind of tossing that around myself. This is to kind of take us out of a situation that we had gotten into with other planning. The village would, would have, I want to say control, because we're still, we are still the planning commission. But the village would be able to go over ordinances where a business doesn't exactly fit in the space that they're requesting to be put in. Which is what we went through with Izu's property and the public owners. The village would be able to make the decision on whether they want to make the changes to, not changes, if they want to make that business comply with that structure, even though it is not quite in the ordinances. It would take it off of us. The village would be able to do discussion and decide on whether they wanted it in the community. Is, is the way I see it. It takes it off of the planning commission, takes it to village council, who would then have a little more resource than we would have in order to look at things and decide whether that was a business that wanted to be, they wanted to have in the community.
So I understand the mechanics behind the legality reasons, but I'm just saying as a practical matter, the village does have a master plan. And the goal is to eventually migrate towards what was already hashed out in the master plan. So if we're going to be making exceptions to the rule, why have a master plan? Change the master plan if you're going to be making changes based on individual circumstances.
Which is what they were saying from, McKenna's office was saying that, that would be the village's decision. To go through those rather than, rather, right, rather than the planning commission just simply turning people down because it doesn't fit in what we can do here. It leaves a business building open and empty.
Well, it also wasn't a matter of what we could do, but what the actual, uh, ordinances actually state for what can and what cannot go in there. And if it's a situation, and I'm believing it is, there was a number of issues that was problematic with that particular issue.
There was, and there were many issues that.
So it wasn't.
We made a decision on that really, because that is what the planning commission is set up for. But that our decision really could have been stretched a little farther than that. But that is a village decision. This.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
One of the things that I got out of it is that it gives the applicants a place to appeal. Because when they, when they come to planning and they get turned down, they can't go to ZBA because it says in the ordinance that ZBA cannot do a use variance. So they have no appeal. So they're just flat out done. And if it's a business, you know, it's viable for the community or, or whatever. So this gives them an appeal.
Well, because my main concern is we're kind of taking the master plan and throwing it out the window. My other concern was it's not that we were opposed to it because reasons. We actually had specific areas that were cited when that was brought up for a vote. So if that's the route that we're going to be going, we're going down a dangerous path because other communities have done the, okay, we'll make an exception here and we'll make an exception there and we'll make an exception here. And all you got to do is take a tour of the south end of the county to see what happens when you have local governments decide to make exceptions to their master plan and their ordinances.
Well, we're not throwing out the master plan. We're giving the village decision to look at that particular business or that particular building and see if it's something that would actually fit. And right now, rather than in the, the long run, it may not be a business that would be approved by us because of where it sits or how it's run. But it could be something that worked within inside the village and that's not something we can make a decision on. The village council would have to make that decision.
Well.
Were you about to say something?
I just wanted to say that the, if, if the, if we're changing things, why don't we change it so that the ZBA can make a use variance? And that way, because now you've sort of taken the thunder out of the ZBA. It doesn't.
ZBA used to make those variances.
So they could have gotten.
They took, they took it and moved it to.
They've just denied it. It's, right now it says they can't.
Yeah.
So they took it away from them. So they could, I mean, that's also an option. They give it back to the ZBA. The ZBA, I think it, I think it's a good spot for it because they, that's what they do, right? They look at all those sorts of things. That's what they're trained to do. Where council is more of a broader picture, kind of, so. I don't know why council would want it, but.
Well, ZBA is a quorum over court and the council can't overrule anything from the, from the ZBA. They have to take that to civil court.
Well, the ZBA aspect I wasn't aware of, so.
Yeah, it wasn't something that was brought up before all this was brought to, before me, so.
Because that would be good information to have as well, unfortunately.
What, what's that? That they can't?
Correct. I wasn't worried they were taken out of the equation. I thought that that was still part of the mix.
But they, but you could change, we can change that, right? If we're changing an ordinance, we can change that one instead of this one. It's our community. We can make our own laws. So. That was.
I would have no objection to that.
I don't remember the logic of what the one that planned is move that out of ZBA. I don't remember the logic of it, because I was on ZBA for 20 years.
Because that is actually their function. I, I'm kind of failure, failure to understand why it's not their function anymore.
I don't remember the logic, but, and the ZBA is, is crucial because like Sam said, when. when the, you have to be referred to a ZBA, you can't just apply to get an application to come to the ZBA. So you have to get it denied by either the building official or the planning committee. So that gave the applicant an avenue to go and seek further information, or explain further, or concede to whatever concessions it would need to make it a fit. So, the ZBA has very strict guidelines as to, you can't just go and say, you know, I'm, I'm John Doe and they turn me down, but boy, I, you know, I can't afford not to do this, that's not a, that's not a light of...
Right.
Of feasible reason to, to overturn a planning commission's decision. So there's very, very strict guidelines of what, um, what you can and can't make that, that determination for, so... And it takes, takes a lot of decision on the ZBA, so I was, I, I don't really understand why the planners, or the planners moved it from ZBA to council. Because people can appeal council's decision over and over and over again, they can hire a term...
They're elected, it's political, why would they, why would they want that?
Yeah, and a ZBA, like I said, is a quasi-voter court, so council can't change that decision. Uh, whether they liked it or not, they, uh, they can't carry a course or a public official or any way to, to make the ZBA change it, that's, that's a done deal until it's, let's say they want to take it to a civil court.
Cause that's a variable I didn't have until a few minutes ago, so...
Right, right. So, all right, being very new at this myself, I'm, I guess I'm, I'm not sure what steps we take now because we have already chosen to have this put onto the public hearing.
Has it, have the notices gone out? Public hearing don't?
I don't know where.
Can't do it. We can, we, we said we wanted one, we can say we don't want one.
I don't know if you're on a time constraint though for making that decision.
For June?
Yeah.
But would, if, if we change, if we change something now, it would, probably would not make June if we...
Right, so I don't know if you get that.
Cause I don't recall seeing something in the record last week, so...
You did or you didn't?
I don't recall seeing.
No.
No, and there's a, yeah, it has to be posted fifteen days before the meeting due to seven.
Right, which is why we said it that way.
Which begs the question, are we looking at postponing the meeting? Are we looking at changing it where we're gonna, uh, reauthorize the ZBA to look into these issues?
That's something you need to take to the attorney now.
Yeah, we can't, we can't just authorize ZBA for that.
Okay. Because again, that was a variable, I wasn't aware of until a few minutes ago, so...
Well, we can certainly talk to the planner about that, and why, you know, why can't the ZBA have this authority back?
Yeah, that's, that's what was, I was confused going through it because I don't understand the rationale.
Bear in mind it was a different planner that made the changes, it was from...
Okay. Cause I would be agreeable to that option.
It sounds like a lot of us are kind of leaning towards that direction. All right, so...
So, so then the question is if they, if they have the ability to do a use variance, then they don't, we don't need the overlay, I'm asking, do we, we don't, we don't need any of that now because that was set up, I don't remember the exact details of all that. It, will it work under the ZBA's normal process of things that they go through? Do you have a background? Can you answer that?
Depends on what, what the council does and...
I mean, if the, um...
Planner, you know, and what the planners, I have no idea what the planner's gonna say about it. Maybe new change in legislature or something, it's like I said, I don't remember the reason why that changed.
We would just change the authority of it. That's my question, are we changing so that we don't need an overlay? Or are we changing the authority of the overlay from council to ZBA?
I have no problem with the latter.
Yeah, me neither.
I would have liked to have asked McKenna that question.
Yeah.
The last time when they were here. And he did, he did kind of say, are there any other options to which it was kind of like, this is the best option, but... Yeah, I, there's always more than one option.
Well, they never mentioned the fact that the ZBA is no longer responsible, and I'm like, well, that would have been information to have about a month ago, or two weeks ago, so...
Well, then why would you have a ZBA at all if you're not gonna...
My point exactly.
Then just disband it and council could do all of it.
Okay, so what do we do at this point?
You guys need to itemize the things that you want to review, and any possible recommendations that you would have. And determine what, you know, what, what you think is pertinent to change, and what's working as it is. You know, do you want to change things in your procedures, or do you guys just want to rewrite the bylaws?
We have some work to do.
Well, I think we can get away with just some tweaks, I don't think we have to start from scratch.
You got major things we got on there that you want to change. I, I, I'm not opposed to changing some of those shells to May, I think it gives you more flexibility on how you handle things without going through that whole process of just, you know, rethinking the wheel.
Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly.
So, and, you know, like it's been brought out, the redundancy of things on the agenda over and over and over again, that just you never touch on.
Right, then take them off. Don't you, it doesn't apply.
Exactly, if it doesn't apply to that meeting, we'll put it on the meetings that it does.
But if you, but my, if you leave them on this list, then it's one of the ones that we can pick from. If it's not on this list, it's not one of the ones we can pick from. Correct? If we don't, if we don't put...
I don't have a copy of that list, but I was...
If you don't liaison reports on the list, then we can't have a liaison report because it's not...
No, we're not, we're not saying to take this list away. Which, so no, the list would always be there.
I don't, I, I don't, I was just, um, wanting to make it more reflective of what we actually are doing.
Could you add if applicable in parentheses behind each item? And, you know, is there a way to, like, get more than one option here for how to...
Or just categorize from what these items may be?
If you change that, if you change meet for meetings shall, the order of business for meetings may be as follows, or could include, and see, I don't, I don't like that, I didn't really think that this needs to be... It needs to be the, the blueprint for what we do is what it needs to be. But whatever you guys want, you know, whatever the consensus is, I, I get that. If you make it may and you put stuff in there, then those are, those are all the available options that we can choose from at any point. If you make it shall, then all those things have to be...
Well, and we still have to follow Robert's rules, which necessitates most of it, right? Correct me if I'm wrong, Kristy, but I think it's most of it.
Not most of it, but some of it, like the public comment, you have to have at least one public comment in there and, correct?
Okay, but, yeah, so...
I think those things, I'm not, that's in Robert's rules, you have to have a public comment at your meetings, I thought that'd probably be more the zoning, um, zoning enabling act or, you know, just...
I think that's Robert's rule.
OMA.
I could be wrong.
Me too.
All right. Well, I guess, that's my question too, I guess, is that we have already set this to go to public hearing. The notices have not gone out, so does that mean that we're going to...
I don't think we're ready for it to go to public hearing.
Yeah, I don't think we're ready for it.
Which is what I'm saying, so to, at this point now, what, what do we do?
You guys have got to get your information together, and you've got to decide what you want to do.
So this is also another table item then, so that we can talk to the planners in the meeting.
Once you've done that, yeah, I will talk to your planner right away. But before you take it all to the attorney, get all your ducks in order. So you're not just wasting a lot of just time because, oh, yeah, well, we said last time we changed our mind, we, we thought it threw further and it's gonna be this now.
Right.
You know, get, get a good outline of what you want to do. Because, you know, the bylaws is giving you an infrastructure of what to do with that agenda.
Right, right, and there's, there's nothing that we have to do that says... We changed our mind, we don't wanna, we don't have to do anything that says we changed our mind, we don't want a public hearing for this.
Just only have one.
You haven't set a date for the public hearing yet.
Yeah, it was June, it did...
Yeah, we said it for the next meeting.
Then you're gonna have to make the motion.
But you haven't notified the public yet.
Yeah, but you still, you said it, you've got to make a motion now, cause I don't want someone to say, hey, your last meeting you said you were gonna do a public hearing, you don't want to change that.
Tonight then we have to, we have to make a motion and vote on it, then we are not.
You know, you're going to cancel the June, whatever.
Okay, so...
Okay, so...
Are we all in on what we're doing here?
Is that what everybody feels, that we're not ready?
Uh, I was, with, in light of the information we discussed tonight, I, that's fair to me, okay?
Kevin?
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, I agree with that.
You wanna, you wanna put a motion forward, Tim?
I make a motion, we postpone the public hearing scheduled for the June meeting regarding the ordinance amendment until further notice.
Yep.
I would also add that no notices have been sent out, so in view of that, we would postpone it.
In view of the fact that no notices have been sent out, the public has not been notified in any way, we'd like to postpone the public hearing on the ordinance amendment for the overlay, what's that?
Transitional overlay just changed.
Right, transitional, yeah, what was, the whole thing was transitional overlay? Hold on.
Use variance and transitional overlay.
That's right, use variance, okay, in view of the fact that...
Use variance and transitional, I'm sorry, overlay district. Sorry.
No, that's what I needed. In view of the fact that the public hearing notices have not gone out, I make a motion to postpone the public hearing set for June seventh for the use variance and overlay district ordinance amendment until further notice.
Yeah, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the other thing I had wanted to ask was the McKenna report kind of mirrored, I want to say, like, Hamp, it was a very, uh... What was the, the city that they had said, oh, this is, you know, a Stanbrook? It was somewhere very urban and not like us, and I, the question I had not...
Novi?
Thought, Novi, it was very, very suburban, not rural, just area, and I, the only question I had was is, what is, you know, does New Haven have a transitional overlay district, does Richmond? I would like to see, uh, what it looks like in a rural community, is that being done anywhere? How does that look in effect? Would be the question I have about the transitional overlay district. I thought about it afterwards, I wish I'd asked it at the time, but if we're talking to them at all, that's a question I have for them. Do we see this applied in any rural communities?
Right. How do other people our size in our neighborhood do this?
Correct. Basically, my question about changing who signs what in the digital age, is that what most boards are doing? Then I understand, you know...
It's not what they're doing.
Right, so how are we, you know, as compared to our peer boards in the village operating? How, how are they doing it, should, we should, you know?
All right, well, I've got my notes scattered everywhere, but I will get them back together. And if everyone could make a list of the questions that you've thought of as of this evening, we can go over things again.
And the, the bylaws?
Yes, and, and the overlay, anything that we're going to discuss with the planner to move forward on both of these items.
Are you requesting that we send them to you? Would we write them down and send them to you? Is that the request?
Yeah, why don't we do that, because it'll make it easier to get it all into one place.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, we are now on the DDA portion, payment of bills. You're the one that you've...
DDA doesn't have any bills. The only, only order of business DDA has, DDA has, and you guys make a motion for it every year, uh, just prior to budget, at, at the budget time, that...
Is that bond payment?
That the only order of business that the DDA will have is payment of the bond.
So we have it, that's what I'm saying, that we have it on the agenda tonight, DDA payment of bills.
I have no further information on what's on your agenda.
Yeah, I didn't see your agenda, so, but that's something that you do if you need, if you want to do it at this meeting, I...
I'm asking you, do we have anything that's necessary to bring up at this meeting?
As far as bills, or just to clarify?
Paying your bills.
There are no bills for the DDA, other than the bond.
And just pay any, any, anything that has to do with the bond that needs to be paid, that...
You, you gave one overall approval at the beginning of the budget year to pay the bonds. You know, that, we do the same thing with council, too, things that come up, recurring payments, you get authority to do it, if, a lot of times they come before your meeting. So, but that's an obligation that the DDA has to make, there's no choice, there's no vote on it, you have to pay that bond. So, um, I don't know if Becky put that on there because I believe we have a DDA bond payment that will come up in May.
Here we can say is a good example of...
But you've already, you've already given authority to that.
Sam suggested on the agenda. A little bit more information would have taken us a lot farther.
Exactly.
Do you have anything on that thing on the bills, is there any?
I had nothing, I just thought it was a placeholder for another item.
Like I said, I always show up expecting you all to fill me in, and to be fair, I always do get filled in, but yes. I always get filled in on the spot at the end, that's how like, it's...
Well, it's not just us, it's also the public, I mean, the public should know what we're doing ahead of time.
Right, because this gets, right, this gets...
It's wild as us.
The public sees it, they think this is what we're gonna be going through, we're seeing a camera saying that we don't know what we're doing right now, so, yes, it makes a very good point for what you were saying earlier.
Right, I don't, and, and if someone would have plopped down a piece of paper in front of me right now and take care of, approve this, I don't think that's really fair to anybody, to, right, the public or us, to, to do a, a reasonable job without a chance to fake it through.
Well, and I just like, Becky has a full-time job outside of this, so it's like, if, if there, if anybody needs help, if, if there's some, you know, I, is it fair to expect it to be better and say, now you have to do this too? Cause it's like, this is something, another plate someone is spinning here, so if we needed more information, you know?
So maybe there's a different option, maybe, you know, it's a different solution than the one we have, but, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I agree, I just didn't want it to seem like, it's like, well, you're not doing a good enough job or something because it's not necessarily the case or why we're asking, would ask for more detail.
Well, you also got the elephant in the room too, because you said this was due way in May.
Probably end of May, I think the spring bond payment, or May and October. So the actual date I'm not coming up with, but I think it's towards the end. But if you just want to reiterate that you've already given approval at budget to pay every bond payment that comes due, and...
Right.
Bond payment only and associated fees, then go ahead and vote to approve.
Well, you make, when you do the minutes, you could just say payment of bills, no action taken, you don't have to...
But what, if, if Becky put it on there so that she's got approval to pay that, I don't know if she, I, I, she did not discuss it with me, I don't know what it means.
I'm not really comfortable giving permission to spend something I don't know, I mean, how can I, how is it?
You have to, there's, there's no choice.
Then I need more information.
I agree with that, I, I, I feel compromised.
Well, and since, the budget too, like, I don't feel so blind because I saw the budget when we approved it, and I'm fully aware of the bond payment and what it looks like, but, um, do we, you know, can we catch you up? Give her, I could go, I don't have it with me tonight, but I certainly could make sure Becky would have it.
Well, yes, I have a copy today, I, I have a copy of the budget, but doesn't...
Yes, no, I don't know what we're talking about, but I thought...
They're, they're open.
It's public information, you're able to get it if you want it.
But at budget time, we always approve payments of the bond, because you just don't have a choice.
And this is my first time in, look, Sam, I don't know, this is, I'm taking it as it comes to me because I'm new at everything, so I don't know what I, I have no basis for comparison.
Well, the question I have is pretty much everything they were talking about has already been laid out in the budget that was set to us previous, so it's not like we're having something totally out of blue that's added to it, it's one of our...
It's the same thing, it was always, it was approved back in February, it never changes, there's, there's nothing new that ever pops up that, oh, no, we have to pay that.
So I just want to make sure that's actually on the record, so it's not like there's something that's, oh, and by the way, we got this new line item that's gonna be added. So that's not the issue, basically, it's just what was previously approved, uh, February...
If that's what she's talking about.
February and May, I believe?
February, I think you got your budget at the February meeting, uh, because it has to be approved by March thirty first.
I remember seeing, I can I can picture that budget you gave us.
Yeah, Becky's got a copy of it.
It was.
Does it have the approval paid out of Becky?
But the I wanna say the bond payment was listed. Isn't it like a set amount and it comes out? It was it? How often does it get paid?
It comes twice a year.
Yes, it was twice a year and it's always for they were listed. There was it was only a two-term payment. And if it's taking place soon, maybe that's why it was on here.
And you guys made a motion to pay them as due.
Yep. And the February first meeting.
On the February first.
Yeah, there it is.
Okay.
But I don't disagree with you, like having which bill, what bill exactly we're talking about, the detail of it would be helpful.
And nothing's changed on the amount or anything.
It may have been an oversight and I would I would plan, I'm planning to email and ask to find out since we didn't discuss it, since we weren't exactly sure tonight.
So the two should have been identical from the one meeting to the next.
Then why do we need to do it?
Because the way the charter was written, I mean, you can explain better than I can, but we had to.
It was there, yeah, Kristy's got it.
We had to review it. It had to go to council. They had to sign off on it. It comes back to us for approval and then.
Council adopts it.
Cops, council adopts it.
The bill? Paying of the.
For the for the DDA. Is that pretty much explained in a nutshell?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and in February, we gave Joe permission to take care of all the bills that needed to be paid to the DDA bond, which is the only bill that they have.
Right.
So. I have nothing under payment of bills for DDA. And then we will move to public comment. Here we're done. We have the chair report. Um just so that everybody is aware, site plan two two five 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 West Main, the Effectrix Effectrix Medical has turned in all their paperwork, everything that was was needed and set for stipulation on his approval. Everything is done and he's good and moved forward.
Wonderful. Okay, two two five 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 West Main.
Yep. Okay, any other discussions this evening? Okay, everybody get your list together, the questions that we need. I'll go over everything and we'll find out when we can meet.
So you're doing time is like that by?
Whenever you have it ready is by.
The detail, okay.
Yep. So and then we'll we'll make a decision then when we can get with the planner and go over all of this. With that, I am looking for a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn at eight, what is that? Forty-three.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.